You're on.
You're on.
You're on?
Karen, your machines were ringing.
Yes, but I'm surprised Adam's not here yet, so...
No problem. I'd like to call the work session for the Tuckton Borough Board of Selectmen to order. Today's Friday, October 20th. Could we please stand and sort? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the early bird gives the worm. Come on down, sir.
Oh, what if I'm not ready?
How are you doing today?
Well, we'll work with you then.
I don't think I need all that stuff.
How are you doing?
We are... for our cemetery budget, proposing the same as last year. All of us agree with that. We think we're going to be pretty much right on the button by the end of the year. We still have, uh, Mark has still got to do the fence out here. Relocate the fence. He's gonna open up, uh, we can open the wall between the fence and the gate so that funeral equipment can get in and out properly without going across the lawn out here. And he's gonna move, uh... There's one bench out here by the apple tree that we had thought we were going to have to move some distance, but he's gonna instead just turn it parallel to the new fence location and up close to the fence. He's basically just gonna swivel
Yep.
a couple of feet, so, um, Mark thinks he can...
That works out.
Yeah, the problem is, you know, you have to put a concrete base in the ground underneath, so...
And that's on the maintenance appropriation line?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Nothing's been done in the restoration?
No. We're also having, um... Our sexton is a retired surveyor, which is really handy for cemetery work. He's gonna do a little survey plan for us, which will come out of the, probably the sexton line, I don't know. It doesn't matter really which line it comes out of. Uh, but that's another project that's gonna happen this year. So we'll be really clear on, you know, what lots we have available, what lots are in the parking lot.
Have we haven't been billed for mowing?
Correct. He missed the, uh... He missed the October meeting, bringing his bill in and doesn't send it... Yeah, it's a one-man operation.
Right.
So he's not...
Right.
He's not covering anybody else's payrolls or...
But you're expecting that line asking him to be in the package.
Yeah, yeah.
Looks good.
He said, I told you, he's still, he's taking out bushes out in the old section this year. Next year he's gonna come and work in as much more as he can of removing trees and overgrown shrubs and bushes.
He being...
The sexton did it for...
No, uh, the maintenance guy, Mark Eldridge.
Okay. So, as we look at your budget this year, how close to your total budget do you expect to expand before the end of the year?
I, I think it's gonna be real close. I think it's gonna be within a couple hundred dollars. Because we've got the money, we have got plenty of things we can do.
Right.
So...
Yep. I only ask the question, you take a lot of lines that nothing has been expanded yet and we're, you know, almost ten months into the year.
Right. The, um, Jessica, who does our old cemetery's work, was unable to do it this year, which we discovered at the end of September.
Yep.
So that's when we
Yeah, it's flexible.
put Mark onto the new trees and sit authorize the survey work.
Yep, and the cemetery improvements is, uh, what you're doing with
The fencing.
The fencing, yeah, okay.
So you'll be over on the maintenance and that's just taking care of the restoration, that's your plan?
Yeah. The bottom line, we won't exceed the bottom line.
Right.
A little bit on the back.
But we should still keep it...
Keep those line items.
Keep it the same.
Why not?
Charge it where it needs to go.
Right.
And if, if, if we budget it a little differently than that, that's not a big deal.
Right. But you need to be aware of the different ways it could be spent.
If we're not interested in where money is spent, then we just have one line item and everything is a pop. But it doesn't tell us...
So is the restoration lady gonna be up next year, you think, or...
Yeah, she moved. At the end of the summer, they, she moved from Bartlett to Brownfield or something. And, uh, apparently it was a house that needed more work than they expected.
I've got one of those.
So, uh, she wasn't ready. Um, plus she's a schoolteacher, so, on school service.
She does nice work. I know other towns have used her or not.
Yeah. So we've got a new fence at the Thomas Cemetery at Tuckton Borough Net, which is apparently getting mixed reviews. That was done with donations, and those donations are going directly to the contractor. People donate the money or actually hire the contractor. So, uh, we hired the contractor, but they're paying the contractor.
So there's mixed reviews and that the people donating shows their design and other people don't like it, or are we in the mix?
No, uh, we're in the mix. We're in the mix. They, the trustees worked with the contractor. Actually, I haven't even seen it, so I don't... But I'm a trustee, so we're all... Oh, I just had one.
Other than Sarah?
No. No, and actually, um, one of the descendants is, is heavily involved in the decision.
So the mixed reviews are because maybe the fence looks a little different than the old fence looked?
Well, there's different ways it could be installed. You know, it's, it's not the old wood fence, it's a plastic fence. And, uh, it's... They get installed differently. With ones, you can have a little more irregularity. So they're not, it's not parallel to the ground. It's high on one end.
Do we need that to speak to you for, we have to be...
No, no, we take the heat for that.
Okay.
We could probably do some landscaping or something.
Shrubbery.
Uh, the other thing we got done this year was, uh, work at Calendar Cemetery up on Brown Road. I don't know if you drive by now, you can actually see it. You may not know what it is because we didn't, we don't want it a tourist destination, but, you know, there's a nice, bright, white, bright fence up there that you can see as you drive by now. They, Mark removed all the invasive shrubs that were on the side of the road going up. So it looks like a field on the hill there. And, uh, that's it for that.
So, one question I have is, we're trying to straighten out the legal budget. Do you, do you have any expectation of legal fees this year?
Yes. There should be another bill coming for, uh, cemetery trustees. Shouldn't be two, should be a few hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And then the trustees of the trust funds have hired, uh, a lawyer to help with the donation. What we do about the donation. Do you guys accept it, do we accept it to the trustees? You know, who, who accepts it? We have to...
So, currently for seventeen, we've got nine hundred dollars spent by the cemetery trustees on the legal line?
Yes, that sounds about right.
And should we carry that forward for eighteen? The same amount?
Uh, yeah, we'll have another couple hundred, three hundred maybe, uh, on that this year, I would expect, 'cause he did the work in August.
Yeah.
Now, the trustee of the trust funds or other head anywhere, what should the legal line be there?
Yeah, who knows? He's doing the, the donation thing now. He, he went on vacation, that's what's happening.
Would five hundred be reasonable?
I would think so. I mean...
We're just subtracting it from the gross legal...
Do you have anything for trust funds for legal?
We don't currently, no.
'Cause some of that is trust funds, the nine hundred? Yeah, 'cause some of that was, uh, what was the issue we had? Oh, it'd be spending the money for the library.
Yes.
Okay, you had to ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll...
So combined for the two, probably twelve hundred bucks or something?
All right. So we're just adjusting the top line, the forty thousand dollar line, breaking it out into who's using the money. It goes away, just to select and get in trouble.
No, we use them to stay out of trouble.
Yeah, well, I think that's how you use it.
Okay, so I have another issue, the abandonment issue. We need to...
Uh, should we deal with both of the forms?
Oh, I thought we were done. Sorry.
I move approval of cemetery's budget, which is four one nine five, at a grand total of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Okay, thank you.
Um, we need to, we need to get the rest of our cemeteries abandoned so that we can legally...
Declare abandoned?
Yeah, declare abandoned, so that we can legally take care of them. We've been taking care of them for fifty years, but it's not... You can't spend public money on private things. And once you declare them abandoned, they become a responsibility of the municipality. So it becomes legal to do the work we've always been doing, so... Uh, and I, I put the question, or we put the question to attorney copper, and he replied at length, that he feels it's very clear that we need to have them abandoned.
So how many cemeteries are we talking about?
Um, we have about forty-two right now that need to be abandoned, declared abandoned. There are another eight or so that are privately maintained. Uh, some of those are, most of those are privately maintained. There's a couple of others that seem to have been abandoned, but we, we know they're our descendants and we need to talk to them.
So we should probably put together a standard letter?
Yeah, that's what I'm working on and that, you know, so here's the, here's the beginning. I don't know if you wanna do it in one fell swoop or if you want it broken out into multiple periods.
Well, I think that, would you wanna contact the heirs, if you know if there are any, with a standard letter saying, you know, this is the process, this is the reasoning behind it? Would you like to meet with the selectmen and the cemetery trustees, or the cemetery trustees, and discuss it, or are you okay with us declaring them abandoned and the town continuing to maintain it? I mean, I think you could do them all at once, couldn't you? I mean, how many of them do you think are...
How far do you go trying to identify a heir?
Well, I mean, if you know, I mean, we knew the Thompsons were around, but if, if you don't know that there's an heir, maybe just a public notice.
Well, it does get noticed. This would be the notice. And it lists, um, the cemetery, where it's located, and we have to list who the oldest stones are in each, in each of them. And that goes in the paper. Invites anybody to come in and say something. The, there's, the handful that won't be on this list are ones that we are in the process of contacting. Either a buttersworth, neighbors, neighbors, you, the landowner who's been taking care of it, but no relation.
The other issue I thought with the Thompsons was there were some available burial plots that they intend to use in the future. Of the forty-two cemeteries that you talked about, are any of those, do any of those have lots open for somebody who owns a lot and knows? Does the sexton have some way of finding out, or is there no record of...
The record is the cemetery book. That's the only record that, that we have.
So let's say, I mean, pick the Ham Cemetery, 'cause I live there.
Okay.
I decided I wanna be buried at the Ham Cemetery. How do I go about that?
Um, right now, you're out of luck.
Okay.
If the town, if it were declared abandoned, the town trustees would then be responsible for determining if there is space and whether you can get it. Right now, if you wanna be there, you have to find the descendants and find out from them if there's any space.
Okay, 'cause the town doesn't have enough, right?
Right. Abandonment makes the town responsible for the management of it.
So in that process, are we also cataloguing what's available for space, or...
Not yet.
Okay, but is that maybe something we do in the future?
I guess, I guess. We haven't, uh... I have to confess, when we started the abandonment process, we weren't aware of that potential.
Right.
So we figured it out in dealing with the first go-round.
I mean, it just, and I don't know much about cemeteries, but my impression was that all of those old cemeteries were just old cemeteries and used to take care of them. But they weren't someplace that you could actually think about getting buried. You needed to go here.
Right.
You know, they weren't active, if you like.
Right.
Like they weren't pleasant, inappropriate there. I have no idea what's going on with that old cemetery.
There's no names on any of the stones.
Yeah.
So it's a work in progress.
Yeah.
I know through my tag meetings, I've talked to some people, coffee break, about their cemeteries, and two years ago, an individual said, "You know, Lloyd, it's sort of like the zoning, uh, issues. Every year at town meeting, there's a new word that has to be, you know, legally adopted." He says, "That's the way it is with cemeteries. It's forever going on." I know at one town, for example, they found two cemeteries they didn't even know they had.
Well, yeah, somebody has reported to us that they remembered a cemetery from when they were a kid playing in the woods. Had one excursion to try to locate it. I guess another one's planned once the leaves come out.
Well, it looks like this is a work in progress.
So anyway, um...
So there's some more legal fees that you're gonna have to, or legal that you're gonna have to do as far as notification. You mean, it doesn't, it's not...
These are the selectmen's expenses.
Okay. All right.
Uh, because the selectmen's...
That's easy to control. Next.
Maybe multiple notices is the key. You know, so we've gone above and beyond what the requirement is. You know, say, put a notice in every month for three months in color. That's as good as we can do. I don't know, I'm just...
There's a statutory process.
Right.
So...
If we could go beyond the statutory requirement, I, you know, I think we're covered a lot better than we were maybe in the last...
Well, we thought we were following the next year, but we got tripped up in the process.
That one thing was a learning process and, um, everybody slipped a little, I guess, is the way to put it. There was no, uh...
Yeah, it seems like...
It was all good intentions.
It shouldn't have cut dry and it wasn't.
Right. And then we tried some other, um... We tried to work out an agreement where we would declare it abandoned, but, um, then authorize... Once it's declared abandoned, the selectmen could authorize anybody to take care of it.
Right.
I mean, the trustees could authorize anybody to take care of it. Doesn't have to be the town taking care of it. It could then be the landowner of the abiding land legally taking care of it.
It's a poor choice of words, to abandon.
Oh, it's terrible.
Yeah. But it is more than just taking care of the cemetery. It, it really is turning the responsibility for the cemetery over to the trustees.
Yeah, you've got restoration, but...
Then you can do restoration.
Restoration, you have terminus, you've got the whole nine yards.
Right.
It becomes, it becomes another, uh, town burial ground. Cemetery, whatever you want.
Well, we're able to do work on the French Cemetery, uh, once we get the money. Because it's been declared abandoned, we now can go in and get those trees out of there, so, which we legally couldn't do.
Okay.
So, I'll continue with my list. And I guess I should write what efforts we've made to locate people or what we know about the descendants?
Keep track of it. If you do something, it, and you, you know, keep a diary of it, it's no longer hearsay, it's, you know, we actually did this and this and this. How much more can we do? And I don't know that we're gonna run into the same sort of vitriolic arguments that we did with the last case.
Well, we want, we wanna avoid that, certainly.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you for coming out bright and early. Chief, come on down. How are you?
Right, right, early this morning. Is there anything else that needs to be done before you give your questions?
How are you doing today?
Which one do you wanna start with? You pick a good one?
Just wanna go alphabetical order here? Or start with ambulance?
Sure. So as you know, we're in a three-year contract with Stewart's.
And this is the third year.
This is the third year. So next year, um, you need to think about where we're at with it, what you wanna do with it, whether or not you wanna have some type of committee to look into the ambulances. I can tell you that, um, Wolfburn will be out next year also, and I believe the contract with Huggins Hospital that our current company has, who will be out to bid also. So there could be some major changes. So that's, that's where we're at with that. Ambulance-wise, as, as you know from our contract, the amount of money that we have budgeted for ambulance for 2018 with a 1.6% increase with the CPI for 2018 would be one hundred eighty-eight thousand thirty-six dollars. That is still less than what we paid when we had, um, our former ambulance company here. For, for people that have the thought of that we're paying far more. I know that we went through somewhat of a study with Bob and Mark Howard and gave them as much answers as we could. Bob is still not happy with the answers that...
This is Bob's order.
Bob's order.
I've, I've got his email that he sent to me. I shared it with both of you guys. About the ambulance. I don't know if you've cut this schedule or not.
Yes. That, that particular, that pretty, that was a schedule that, um, that I have seen. He incorporates our current ambulance that, that we go out with, but does not incorporate anything from any other town, what they currently respond with. So he's taking what we pay in five years as far as ambulance payment that pays for the rescue and, and for the ambulance-wise, and puts that in as far as incorporates that in what it costs us to go out, you know, what it costs for each call. He doesn't take into account that some, some towns respond with a Class A fire engine that costs five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that other towns respond with ambulance. For example, Tamah, they have an ambulance that, that they respond with, and they also are currently part of a contract with Best Care Ambulance. Uh, not Best Care, excuse me, Care Plus Ambulance, which is like a five or six-town consortium that they have on the philosophy side. Moltenborough, for example, they contract with Stuart's Hospital. They respond out with what is needed. They have a, what they call Rescue Three that costs three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, thereabouts, that they respond with, with their personnel. But, yes, we only, the only people there on that is the town of Tuckton Borough. I guess it's the only town that matters that, when you're talking about us, that shows that we're responding to ambulances and everything. To me, it's not just, you know, it's not a second ambulance that is responding to every call. We always responded to vehicles or it has the capabilities of transporting. And it's come into play that we've actually done so because we've had the second call come in or had the third call come in and that we transported the first patient that went out and the ambulance coming in went to the second call, or vice versa. We, we did the scene and go to the next call. Stuart's transports that person. The ambulance is used as a rehab, as far as for fires and things like that, on scene. If our unit gets into the scene and gets closed in, it's great. The transport ambulance that is there from Stuart's is not closed into the scene and doesn't have to be tied up with that particular fire scene or whatever it is because we can use the back of our, our rig. We've used it for different incidences as far as ice rescues. The guys get in the back of it to change out as far as the suits and stuff like that. They come back from a rescue and they can get warmed up. You can have four or five people in the back of there, where we really couldn't do that. And it goes on and on and on. Yet, we're able to put more people in it. We can go out with three or four people, which leaves the private vehicles at the fire station as much as possible unless someone happens to be right there in the neighborhood. Happened the other day. The deputy was right in the neighborhood of a, a lithicist type of incident. We, two of us were responding from central station with the ambulance. He handled it from there and canceled us. We cancel people as much as possible, um, if needed, um, to, so that we don't have too many people.
So is, is the other expense on this, the thirty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-five?
That's our ambulance.
That's our ambulance?
In rescue, I would guess.
'Cause, you know, I have no idea how this was put together, but if I just look at population and number of calls. So you've got twenty-three hundred eighty-seven population, two hundred and twenty calls. Two towns that are similar have significantly different costs. You've got Madison with twenty-five hundred and two people, two hundred and ninety-one calls, so pretty close. And their expense on the annual cost is a hundred thousand dollars less. Tamworth, which has twenty-eight hundred fifty-six people, had twice as many calls, four hundred and seventy-three, and less, I mean, a hundred and thirty-six thousand versus our a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So, without getting into your information, and, wait, you might have... So, without getting into your information anyway, you might have, you know, personal knowledge being our fire chief, I look at this and think, Jesus, we're really out of wow.
Right.
So I think it's important not to belabor the conversation about this 'cause we don't know how it was put together, but if we could utilize these numbers somehow and see if there's a balance here. I mean, the cost per call he's showing is nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for Dr. Brown. And everybody else except for Center Harbor is, or Center Harbor and Sandwich is in the $200, so. Yeah, I mean, I think there's some costs missing, is what you just described.
There is significant costs missing. The numbers are skewed. I can tell you that I am working on calling each department, getting the numbers for that stuff. But it takes time.
It would be handy, yeah.
The different stuff.
But from my perspective, it'd be really handy to have.
Yep.
Because if this is all I have, when we meet with Stewart's or wherever we're gonna negotiate with, I'm gonna say, why the hell are we spending, you know, twice as much as everybody else? And how are you charging us so much?
And as far as Stewart's-wise, they are still charging us, again, less than what the other companies had, you know, had set. The whole sticking point is that we are responding with something that's called ambulance and there's someone out there that doesn't like that. What if we could, you know, if we had called it rescue-
We have two different issues, all right? One is our equipment that responds and we've always responded with our equipment regardless of what it is. The other thing is the, is the contract charge.
Correct.
Right. And that's based upon a set of criteria that we put out to bid.
That's correct. We have a guaranteed ambulance that is going to respond on what we require it to respond on.
So that, that's where the apples and oranges come into it. In other words, when we look at some of these other communities, what other criteria that is in their contract and how's it different from ours and is that an appropriate criteria for us? Do we like the way ambulance response goes in, in Tucktonboro? Do we wanna ratchet it back and say, you know, you can keep it two communities away as long as you can get there within a half hour or whatever?
Are we gonna utilize our ambulance more or for different purposes?
And that's-
So that's a discussion we should have going forward.
And the thing is, that we never had that before. We were always against the wall as far as not having something in place. We have it now. I think that you're gonna see some, I could be wrong. You're gonna see some major changes coming down the road, especially with, you know, healthcare and things like that. But we won't know until, you know, two thousand eighteen when, when that comes up as far as where it's gonna be at. Some of the different towns, you know, the consortiums, like the consortium Moltenboro, Center Harbor, Meredith, and Sandwich, they don't require a guaranteed ambulance for each town. There's whatever amount of ambulances that they require and that is it. It doesn't matter where they, you know, they come from as far as it goes. Our contract spells out that, you know, the ambulance will be within eight miles, eight to ten miles, and they'll be able, they'll be responding within so many minutes of the town. They've done well. We have had times, many times now, that we've had back-to-back calls and we get them handled as far as it goes. I think that the system that we have in place is working well. We can adjust things. I, I could not guarantee that we could respond with our ambulance 24 hours a day and handle everything as far as the future-wise if, if there wasn't another ambulance company there that was handling the main load of things, 'cause there are time periods that, that, that you run into that you may just have one person or whatever, but we've done pretty well.
Well, I don't have that many full-time employees.
Right.
So once you get in the ambulance business, you got full-time employees.
You got full-time people. If there was an issue that, you know, someone came in and said, yeah, it's gonna be five hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars, we can now support ourselves, you know, until you get something worked out or you say, all right, you need to take this over or we're gonna ramp up or whatever. Right. Something along that lines, you couldn't do it. But I, I will continue working on getting that.
Well, the other thing, and you mentioned a consortium, maybe exploring an idea like joining up with Osipie and Moltenboro. I mean, we tried Wolfboro at one point and that didn't work out, so.
Well, I mean, I'm sure that they'll be open for future. There, there have been discussions there as far as, you know, if, not that they're looking at it right now, but, you know, if, if we could cover each other, you know, if they had ambulance, if we could cover them or, you know, with our ambulance and so on and so on. There's, there's many things out there, it's just a matter of looking at it and sitting down. How far do you wanna get into the different stuff? But we basically have stuff in place that we can fend for ourselves if we, we need to, we get into that, that point. Are we more expensive than other towns? Yeah. We're asking for more of, of the different things. Tell me the last time that we had a retone for personnel that needed to come out as far as, you know, for ambulance, fire and stuff like that. You hear it all the time in neighboring areas.
At what now?
Retones as far as to have someone come out and assist.
They can't get anybody.
'Cause there's no one there to cover the stuff. No one. We've, we haven't had that yet. Our people come out, they cover the calls. For example, as far as, so basically what we do is first response. We go out, we treat the patient until the, the ambulance gets there. That could be anywhere from five minutes to twenty-five minutes depending on, you know, how far out you are or what's going on with the patient. And in some cases, it could be life or death. Our people locate the residents and, you know, treat the patient and go from there and guide the ambulance in if they, if they need it. GPS, wonderful thing, sometimes it throws you off, you know, as far as where. And a lot of times with different ambulance companies coming in, you'll find that it's not the same personnel. They're not used to the areas and things like that, so it is good to have someone there to, to give it them. But we work together and things seem to be, you know, going well as far, as far as that goes. There hasn't been a huge headbutting with, oh, you have ambulance and so we're gonna back off, you know, with the contract and stuff like that. It seems to be still fine. The other opportunity that we have is that if we find that we have a critical patient and that we can't wait for them to come in, we can transport the person as long as we have the personnel that, that is capable of that.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I got a copy of that information and it's been spread around the county as far as Milton and, and Moltenboro. And in my other job with the school district, three different people in the last month have come up to me. What the hell is this boy? For me, the first three people that spoke to me, one was a fire officer, one was a selectman, and one was a town administrator and said, whoever put these facts and figures together are not accurate. We are way over what this person says we spend for EMS services in our town. And then I started digging into it and I talked to a whole professor of mine and I said, you know, we have this here that it's based on population and census. And he says, do you have any camps in town? Yeah, we have six. Why? He says, what you should do is figure out what the enrollment and population of those camps are and assign them a value of point eight. That would all of a sudden drive up your, your annual population, wouldn't it? Yeah? He said, how many summer residents do you have for a few months a year? Oh, about seven thousand. So I got an education without even trying to examine it.
And I'm not saying that it's, we're not paying, you know, whatever amount of money 'cause a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is quite a bit of money, especially when you look at other figures. But when you start considering, like the town of Osipies, you can put the, the three Osipie departments together. So you, the consortium on the Osipie side is the three Osipies. You have Freedom, Effingham, you have the town of Eden that pays a certain amount, and the town of Tamah. So they all split up a certain amount of money. They have two and a half ambulances. They have two full-time ambulances and one that is there during the day and then at night it goes into, you know, callback for all those towns. And those ambulances get used up quickly.
Well, when this contract was negotiated or awarded two years ago, right? The criteria were put out for bid, is that right?
That's correct.
And presumably bids came in and, and Stewart's was selected and we went through a competitive process to get where we're at. So the question becomes, what other criteria that we work to? What we work to under the current contract is, I guess, instructive as we move forward, but when we get ready to do the next contract, we need to establish appropriate criteria. Maybe what we have used in the past is what we wanna reaffirm going forward. Certainly makes sense to benchmark with other communities. Look at consortiums, look at a range of different alternatives and have an ongoing discussion as we go into the process to arrive at what is best for the town of Tucktonboro. Understanding that a higher level of service, we're gonna pay more for, but you get something for it as well. So what's, what's the appropriate level of service to get out of, out of a contract? That is always an open question.
What?
What I hear you saying is we're getting good performance of the existing contract from Stewart's. They're, they're, they're meeting the terms of their agreement, right? And, and we're going into the third year of that contract and it will be carried forward under the terms of the contract, which is what the hundred eighty-eight oh thirty-six is. So it's a whole different discussion as to whether that's what you want, appropriate going forward, all right? But once a contract's signed, you know, it's pointless to say, oh, well, we should've done something different.
Well, we didn't have a choice to do something different. You know, when your, when your company backs out and they want three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to continue the contract because they found that they were losing money, you're kinda against the wall and Stewart's, Stewart's stepped up in that point in terms of-
I think it, I think it's still instructive to go through the, the exercise.
Almost definitely.
And-
Well, for the, not for this contract, but for the next contract, absolutely, right?
All we should have to defend are the choice of services. So if we elect to keep the service exactly the same as Stewart's, that's all we should be defending. We shouldn't be defending whether or not we pay twice as much as Freedom. We should know-
We select, we select what we want. We put out the bid.
For this town.
We, we qualify the bid and, and award the contract based upon the qualified bid. So, you know, whether the level of service as a town that we, that we select is higher than other towns or not, it is part of the discussion going to the point where we put the contract out for bid.
Right.
And I think that you-
And it's always easy to have, to take the current situation and say, well, you know, we could cut back on it, we'd probably be okay. Maybe we would.
Not until you get to that point, as far as it goes. And, yes, it's easy to put numbers on paper. I found that some of the numbers are not correct. You can't just get their numbers by, you know, going out on the computer and things like that. You need to talk with them, you know, a hundred percent. For example, Moltenboro pays forty thousand dollars more for paramedic coverage. Where do you see that? Anywhere as far as it goes. To, to have a paramedic that comes out on, you know, the rig.
As you said, the deal is made and we owe the contract price, that's end of story. I'm not a great fan of discussions about this is the worst deal ever negotiated. I mean, it's a waste of time and it's just crazy, but- So all I'm suggesting is that we go through the exercise of making sure we're paying appropriate amounts when we start to renegotiate.
Correct. And I've never been, not been for that as far as it goes. The only thing that I've ever been for is to get the best service for the town people or the visitors of the town and making sure that there is limited complaints about the service or what we're doing as far as that goes. When you start getting complaints about there's no people showing up to the calls, there's no ambulances showing up to the calls, then I'm gonna be worried, I'm not doing my job. But as far as, our major complaint right now is that we have too many ambulances showing up to the calls. We're covering the calls, we're providing the best care that we can for the people, making sure that they have, you know, their help.
And how are we doing collecting for trust? Does that all sound-
We're almost to the point that we're situated with that. That, that is a, there's a little bit more paperwork that we've been traveling back and forth for, for the different stuff and that's almost situated.
So we should have a year's worth of revenue as a picture. When we go into what our annual, our annual ambulance cost is for two thousand nineteen forward, the next step of revenue pictures together.
Right, for, for that as far as what we transport and stuff like that, so. And as I said, it takes time with that, but there are numbers that are not there that, that need to be there to, to give you a full picture of actually what's happening. And until you actually sit down and you talk to the different chiefs in different places, different towns, every town's different, you know. Tamworth does have ambulance that they respond out with on each call and they're contracted just like us with, with a company. However, they provide quite a bit of mutual aid within their consortium towns because there is not ambulance available a lot of times, so.
I'm gonna consider this a dead horse.
Okay.
And we'll stop beating it.
Do you have a motion on this, Tom?
I'm moved that we approved forty-two fifteen, the ambulance budget for a total of a hundred eighty-eight thousand zero thirty-six.
One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. What do you wanna do next, fire department?
Sure. The biggest section.
Bottom line is your budget, request this year is four thousand dollars more than last year, right?
Four thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. We were actually under up until we found out that the, there was a step increase. We came in, we were gonna be just over a thousand, something that was under as far as budget was. So the, the main increases are, are the, the steps as far as that goes in most of the different sections. So the main increases are the steps, as far as that goes, in most of the different sections. We had some decreases in different areas that I tried to cut whatever I could from different lines. To drop them down if we found that we either wasn't using that. I had one issue as far as telephone wise, we were still able to drop that a little bit. But I've been trying to get time-wan or telephone into the Melvin Village fire station for twenty-nine ninety-nine. Been working for the last year to do so. And have not been able to break through as far as TDS having a hold over the phone numbers and stuff like that. I've even gone as far as requesting a, you know, a different phone number. But for some reason, we can't get a spectrum or time-wan or telephone put into the Melvin Station. It just, just won't happen. So, versus, you know, twenty-nine ninety-nine, we pay fifty-nine dollars in some odd cents as far as phone was for that. I might even go as far as looking if, looking to see if it would be easier to put a cellphone. You know, in that particular section, off our plan to save money. Because, to me, fifty-nine ninety-nine, I feel that we need a landline. Not only because we have an alarm system there, and that's like a backup to what we have. But if someone needs to call into the building and stuff like that, or call out, it's good to have a phone there. But if we can get it cheaper, then we need to do so. But apparently the Melvin Village area.
It's, my understanding is, it's a rural, it's a federal thing, it's a rural telephone act. That provides a sort of a wall around these smaller telephone companies to keep their market viable for them. But it's, yeah, it's something that is.
So it's still a union telephone up there, right? That was a long time ago.
TDS.
Somebody else bought them out?
Bought out the union?
Multiple.
Oh, yeah.
Multiple times. I was probably gonna sleep, I guess.
Yeah.
So our monthly cost from our current, we have a landline there?
We have a landline.
It costs fifty-nine dollars a month?
Just over fifty-nine, just under sixty dollars a month. And I had budgeted last year, you know, twenty-nine ninety-nine, because it was going to go through. And then all of a sudden, I stopped getting callbacks. You know, I went up the chain for different things. And then I finally found someone that seemed like it was gonna get it through, and then I stopped getting callbacks. They got bought out by Spectrum, and things just seemed to go downhill from there.
So, you expended nothing in holiday pay?
That doesn't get expended until.
December.
In December.
Firefighters, DOT physicals?
Yes. As we go along, and that doesn't, that covers firefighter physicals also. We put in six hundred and sixty dollars, I believe, for each one.
Is that an annual physical that they have to have?
For new people that are coming in, people that are going to the fire academy, they all have to have physicals before they go down there. You never know how many people that are gonna have.
Cause you only spent two hundred and twenty dollars.
Right. And I dropped six hundred dollars from that because we hadn't spent that. If we do have new people coming in, we need to be able to send them through. Some of the physicals are a little more in-depth. A DOT physical is about a hundred and ten dollars. A firefighter physical can go anywhere from, you know, six sixty on up to a thousand dollars, depending on what they have to have as far as the complete physical.
Both expenses, you're expecting they're gonna drop two thousand dollars?
Yes. Cause we had, last year, we had put light preservers, and there was some other cost in there that we dropped that down. And we don't have that cost this year, so we haven't put that down.
And you dropped a thousand off of training?
Yes.
And that's.
I was trying to cut wherever we can for the different things.
Some of these line items are to cover unknowns, like new people coming into the forest. You're gonna have to spend for a physical, that you're gonna have to spend for training and that sort of thing, right?
The trainings, we found that a lot of the different trainings are going to cost more. And as we go along and find that the state doesn't have classes.
You reduced that line.
I did. But that was something that, for right now, I'm thinking that, you know, that we can do that. Mutual aid wise, we were looking at whether or not that we could pay for a class from our mutual aid. And we found that the class was gonna be like forty-two thousand dollars for like a firefighter one class. Which usually costs, the different towns, when the state has money and they put on the class. It usually costs us about eight hundred and something dollars for member departments, as far as the different areas. But if you decide to do the class yourself in your area and the state has no part of it, it gets really expensive. But, right now, I don't foresee, until we start getting more people that are interested, you know, coming in that need to be certified. I'm gonna take the chance of, you know, knocking that off as far as a thousand dollars and rolling the dice with that. We need to save where we can.
Well, I guess from my perspective, this is my perspective, is I appreciate wanting to crunch budgets down as low as possible. But I don't appreciate spikes. So, I guess counsel against cutting for the sake of cutting because we don't have an expense currently that we know about. And trying to keep the budget at a zero growth versus, you know, let's keep reasonable amounts of money on lines. And we're gonna have a certain amount of growth, whether it's three percent, or two percent, or one percent. Costs continue to go up. But at least then, a year from now, we're not looking at bumping this training line up to fifteen thousand dollars and trying to figure out how to. Just buy a ten or twelve thousand dollar increase in our total budget.
I think, you know, last year, with whatever we had spent for the different training and things like that. I think that we can, we can do it with that. And not, I can't guarantee down the road that we won't have to, you know, have a class that costs, you know, three thousand dollars, something along that lines. That's stuff that comes up as you go, but, you know, bumping that fifteen grand at a time above whatever, I don't see that. So I think that we will be safe to do that.
You've got a little bit of cushion, yet just looking at the numbers and extrapolating from them, what's happening this year. You're probably gonna spend somewhere around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So you're gonna have about fifty or sixty thousand dollars.
Right, depending on what happens. And we try, we try not to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
We try not to, some of the bigger items, you know, as far as gear fitting and stuff like that. We try not to do that until towards the end of the year. Because we don't know what's going on. For example, as far as the suburban, when the engine went in that this year. There's almost seven thousand dollars that we didn't account for in the maintenance budget as far as it goes. So some stuff in the maintenance budget got put off. We have different lines in the maintenance budget, you know, for transmission work, tire replacement, and stuff like that. That went to that vehicle. And so some stuff just gets put off. And if we have to go over in that line, then we have whatever is left in the budget to cover that. And that's the way we handle that. Yeah, we're probably gonna be close on maintenance this year, as far as the different things, but.
So, dry hydrants, you haven't spent much this year. Is that, is that coming up in the next couple of months, or is that just?
Usually, we try to, you know, depending on if the different hydrants have to be, have some type of maintenance done. You know, if something breaks, and we have to have it either scoped to see where the break is. Or dug up, you know, with an excavator to dig it up. Or buy new dry hydrant stuff. That's what that's about.
How many dry hydrants do we have in town?
We have over nineteen, I believe. Which we go through, we test them twice a year. We've had cases that, you know, that they have broke, we have to take care of it. We're currently in the process of working with Matt Young. He's digging the pond on one-seventy-one, that is through the state and all the different stuff. There's a dry hydrant going in that area. The, all the supplies is there currently.
People look more like a lake than a pond, I guess, though.
Yeah, there's definitely some work going on there. And that's a water source in that area that we don't have.
One-seventy-one?
Yes. Yes, so that'll be a good addition to the different stuff. Because that is an area that we don't have a lot of water sources that are accessible in the wintertime. So that's where the three thousand dollars, if we don't, if we don't spend it, then it goes back. And I understand, you know, the different budgets as far as, you know, budgeting, and now that goes to the general fund. Do you want to reduce that? Because we haven't spent it all, so. I just feel that it's a really low amount. It doesn't necessarily cover, if you wanted, we always have people that are like, you know, can you help us with this? And it's like, nah, we don't have the money to, you know, to do that, so. But it covers us if we have a failure with some of the stuff that we already have in, or we have some good ones. We try to keep the product on hand as far as piping, you know, six inch PVC piping. The different heads that you see, the strainers, and all of that, as much as that we can.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess I could just comment that I wouldn't encourage spending of the budget just for the sake of spending it until we get it next year. Bad policy. I mean, real budget annually. That's my left door, and it goes into the general fund.
Does the board have a motion?
I will move the forty-two twenty. The grand total of four, three, seven, six, one, seven, and twenty-four cents.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion passes three zero.
My figures are right, that's like a one point one percent.
Down to emergency management. Do you have any questions, or are you just taking notes?
Yes, just taking notes.
Emergency management, the significant changes that I have in that. We put in for four sets of road closed signs, which was sixteen hundred dollars. And forty traffic cones that are twenty-five dollars each at a thousand dollars. That different stuff includes shipping and handling. And our replacement DFIB unit. Under emergency management, we have a townwide DFIB maintenance and supplies that covers all the units. We currently have fourteen units that are spread throughout town. You know, between police cruisers, fire trucks, town buildings, in different public areas. The replacement cost of that was nine hundred and fifty dollars. Why I did that was that last year, we found a failure with one of the police department's DFIB units. And we were like, what are we gonna do as far as giving them another unit until we can either get this fixed? Or replaced, type of thing. So, the units are getting older, I'm expecting, you know, that we find something as far as, as we go along. So I extended the budget for that. Generator maintenance goes for this town office. The emergency management seventy-five KW mobile unit that is for the school. And the one at the fire station. So, that currently is like sixteen hundred dollars. That takes care of all the general maintenance, their maintenance once a year. And hopefully, anything that breaks on them or whatever, that we can tackle that.
Any questions on this?
So, you've got one-time expenses of twenty-six hundred dollars. For road closed signs and traffic cones. And I'm just wondering, you went a couple of years with no expense against grants and hazardous mitigation, do you think this is gonna be?
Currently, right now, we have a, we wrote for a grant for protective equipment for forest fire stuff. We don't know that until like towards the end of the year, of whether or not that we get it. Last year, we were denied. And that, that covers anything as far as matching grants that we may apply for. It's basically what that line is. But, I'll give that to the young team.
It can always be cut if it gets turned down, right?
Yeah.
You know, I'm just looking at the historical numbers running from two thousand twelve, it's a thousand dollars, to two thousand sixteen, and one and three, to this year, fifteen and six. And there seems to be a pretty steep.
And we have changed things as we go along, as far as, like the DFIB maintenance, that was all put into one section. Before it was, it was spread out. Generators, you know, same deal, it's into one section.
As I look at current expense in the various lines. Forest fire, that really depends upon.
What is going on, you know, if there are forest fires.
Right? Right, that's, is that supplies and equipment, or is that personnel?
It all depends on what happens, you know, as far as that particular forest fire section. One, that line covers the Red Hill Fire Tower. I believe that the amount or cost of that is fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Okay, so we haven't spent that yet, then?
If it is that. If it is that, still 44, no. I have to go back and look at that. I can tell you that further as far as...
So that's an annual expense that happens every year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, $1,050.
Okay, that's, that's about right.
Yeah.
But as I look back over several years, you know, it's been, over the last four years, around $4,000 or so. And this year, you've spent $1,050 so far. So, do you anticipate additional expense in that line this year?
You never know. I anticipate, I anticipate some further expense with that as far as different stuff.
The bad news is it was a Class III D yesterday.
Well, it's a Class IV now. Everything's moved up to very high. And, you know, depending on that, if we have to pay other towns for coming in for fires and stuff like that, you've got into a situation that you needed to pay for helicopters. That's all going to come out of that section. It's obviously going to go over. Mutual aid wise, the different towns have been very good about not billing each other as far as if you're staying in your mutual aid. Outside of mutual aid, you can't guarantee that. But we've been working together as far as it goes, you know, as far as bigger fires and stuff, to try to keep that reasonable. And that's where, that's where, to me, you know, providing mutual aid to other towns as far as, you know, airboat or personnel, fire trucks comes in, you know, down the road and is paid back when we have the larger, larger incident as far as Mount Shaw or something along that lines.
Okay, let me get onto the equipment line. You've got $3,300 and some in this year's budget. You've spent about a third of that so far. Do you anticipate that you have outstanding needs this year to use the rest of that?
Yeah, there is some stuff that we just, we haven't spent it because we haven't got through the time period as far as year wise that I'm comfortable with, you know, buying the equipment that we had planned to purchase anyways, I guess.
And the generator maintenance gets done at the end of the year?
Yes. Yeah. So, usually November.
It's still under 2% if you combine the budgets.
If you roll in with the fire department?
Yeah.
It looks like a lot of money, but it's, but, or a big increase in this, but the, but the total budget here we're talking is $15,000 and change, so that's...
I guess we can just hopefully remember that next year, we're not going to have a lot of traffic cones.
Yeah. We had, you know, we had a big complaint that, you know, how come this, we weren't 4-1 for, you know, road closures? And we just ran out of, yeah.
So, well, we had a huge use experience back in March, right? So... In the grand scheme of things, having this stuff available when you need it. I mean, the cost of being there is...
It would be nice to have, you know, some of the digital signs and stuff like that, but they're $16,000 apiece, you know? And wait and put it, you know, who gets the, who gets the whole thing?
Do we have any sawbucks that we use? You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
For, I mean, the two end pieces and the piece that slips in.
We have, we have no wooden or, or plastic ones of those. We have some smaller, you know, they fold type of thing. Some of them are metal, some of them are plastic.
Yeah.
We have a little bit of that.
Well, I remember from the incident in March that there was some discussion afterwards about, you know, people driving around cones, people taking stuff. And it just occurs to me that sawbucks might be something that would be harder for people to ignore and, and more difficult for them to pilfer than pick up the traffic cones if that happens. So, it's the only thing I guess.
We still have room for storage without running out of room.
We store them upstairs if the...
Because we're spending $2,000 a year to store the boat.
Correct.
So, maybe sometime we'll talk about storage.
And to me, spending, you know, whatever it is, $1,900 for storing the boat is worthwhile because it takes up a tremendous amount of room.
Right.
We bring the boat into the central station. We actually move a piece that we have there to another station for a time period, do as much maintenance that we can to the boat and do what we can to it for a time period. We also keep it there for, until the ice somewhat sets. Because we have had the occasion that we, excuse me, we hook up to it and we launch it back into Pier 19 as long as we can make, if you have an access to it, we need for a call. And, yeah, we've, we've had that, that situation and we've had to do that. And it's, it's good to be able to.
The reason I brought it up is that if you're running into storage, you know, room constraints or whatever, you have to kind of remember that we're already, we're spending $2,000 out of pocket to store things currently. That's going to offset the expansion of storage in-house. So that's the reason I brought it up.
Yeah, the boat is unfortunately a big, you know, it's, it's about 33 feet long, plus its trailer. And, you know, it's, it's far bigger than it will fit into any of our other buildings as far as that goes. So it's kind of awkward as far as what it takes up for, for space type of thing.
What's your pleasure on this 4290? I'll move the amount of $15,630 for emergency management.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Anything else for sir?
Government buildings that I don't have, you don't have that stuff in front of you. I still am trying to get a couple estimates for a couple things. But overall, while it's, we look like it will be, you know, about the same as last year.
The big thing was getting the missionary done, which came out nice, didn't it? Yeah, buttoned that building right up.
We took care of some amp insulation apparently that we had in the building that could have caused some further problems. We didn't even know they were there because we just don't, you know, you don't see them. And that goes. I was looking at having some of the trimming stuff that was peeling painted. We can cover, we can cover painting as much as possible as far as a lot of the lower stuff. We start getting second stores as far as trim and stuff. I'd rather see someone that is set up to do that, you know, on a regular basis. And we're, we're looking at different quotes and things with that. The other item that we're looking at is at the Melton Station. As you're backing in, there are some steel pieces that go across on the cement part of the ramp. And that's, that's deteriorating and the cement is cracked. We're looking at replacing that at the Melton Station. And you can see where over the years, you know, some towers built up. And every inch that you come up with that is, is something as far as the trucks.
But your height challenge.
Because of the height challenge. But, so we're trying to stay away from any major changes with that. But those are the couple of estimates that I'm waiting. I, as far as the central station, that's all situated. I know what, budget wise, that that is coming in. I'm just waiting for the couple things for the other two.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend, sir.
You too.
We have a couple of other things to go over, but these were things that Karen wanted me to run by you folks. First is the...
First thing, we're going to go back to the legal budget.
You want to do that first?
Oh, it's all there.
Okay. Do you want to break it down into a few more lines? Without changing the bottom line?
Well, it would, what I see here is if we want to break up another line, it's, it would just be for the expense of cemetery trustees and trustees of the trust fund. And there's already a planning line, conservation, and ZBA lines.
And we don't want to do two lines, one for cemetery, one for trustees?
Perhaps.
I think it's $600 each, so...
I, I kind of thought that the budget committee kind of was suggesting that.
So that would change the top line to 38.8 if we were to put $600. Are we at six or nine? So, I'm sorry.
For cemetery.
We were at nine.
She's at nine, but, but that, part of that was trustees of the trust fund, okay?
I think, because you don't have anything for trust fund. One of those bills was trust fund.
Well, one of the things that happens is when we put it, when we added an extra account in here and we start charging to it, then we'll know what the expense is, okay? I mean, now we, we have a feel for what's there this year. So, I, I would suggest that we add two more lines, one for cemetery trustees, one for trustees of the trust fund, and, you know, $600 apiece. And the important thing is that we charge the costs as it comes in to the line where it's actually being incurred. If we don't have enough budget in that line, it isn't a big deal. But until we start tracking it separately, we're just guessing the lead.
Yeah. And further, I guess we want to go line by line. In addition to what Will's suggesting about putting the two lines in at 600, if we do planning at 2,500, which is more like what they actually have spent, and ZBA at 1,000, which is still $2,000 less than they spent this year, but hopefully they won't get in trouble. That would change the top line from $40,000 to $35,300. If my pencil math, math is correct.
So you're talking 35.3 for the top line, 2,500 for planning?
Right.
How much for ZBA, 1,000?
1,000.
Conservation?
400.
Yeah. And then 600 for each of the other two, huh?
Right.
So it comes out to 42.80?
42.80.
800.
So I'll put that in front of the motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Do you want me to go over this paperwork and have Diane come in?
Pardon me, excuse me, do you want to do Jack's budget too? Since one budget, so I have that note here. He wants to add to vehicle maintenance? I just actually couldn't know.
Please increase Jack's budget by 2,000 for vehicle maintenance in the event that the warrant article for the new vehicle is not approved. Motion is needed to move to increase that line, vehicle maintenance, to 3,000 for a budget, 42.40 total in the amount of $63,597. That's the request, correct?
Right.
What's your pleasure, Boyd?
I'm glad we were where we were last week.
Yeah, I think it's kind of gilding the lily. I'm all for the changing the vehicle over because it's time to get a new vehicle.
I am.
If the, if the legislative body decides they're not ready.
Then we'll have to find money some ways to do it.
We'll do $5,000 or something else. But if we add 2,000 to the budget and we hit the warrant article, now we're, I think, going in the wrong direction a little bit, just saying.
Okay. Well, my feeling is if we're confident that, that the vehicle replacement is the right thing to do and we take it to the, to the legislative body that, to hedge against, well, maybe they won't prove it, so let's put some other money in over here, is not, is not the right approach. So, yeah, if, if, if the expense, if we have to continue with the existing vehicle and the expense goes beyond what's budgeted, that's on us, you know? It will be borne someplace within the total budget. And Jack's made us very aware that, that what he's budgeted will not support all the maintenance this vehicle needs coming here, which is, it underscores the request for replacing the vehicle.
We can't claim surprise.
Right, right. So, if, you know, if town meeting doesn't support replacing the vehicle and the vehicle expense is up, he's certainly on record with us, yes, it's going to cost more to get it done, and we'll...
And it is because part of the discussion when we talked about the warrant article.
Yep.
We have a couple of pieces of paper here to sign. First of all, is the spectral order for the cable. I've proofread it, have you folks reviewed it?
Well, we, we reviewed it on Monday and there were some changes that needed to be asserted, right? And that, and those have been...
Yes, they have.
So...
I think we, we voted on it.
We already voted to do it, so, yeah.
Karen, again, thank you for your part in all of this.
You're welcome.
Clay mentioned it again. Next is Karen, please return to me after it is signed. Thank you, Heather. This is the Hunting and Fishing License Limited Agency Agreement. Something we sign every year. Does it need a motion or do I just do it?
I'll, I'll move that we sign it.
I'll sign it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I don't know if it needs a motion or not, but, you know, it's formally approved by the board, so...
We got nothing else to do, we're sitting here.
Right. Providing good entertainment to Joe.
Please review on the 20th so the final agreement can be signed by Lloyd. Lake Region Planning will come back to us in regards to whether or not Provider Power will fill in the blank fields for us.
Yeah. This is, this is, this is, this is the power purchase agreement.
Right.
So, I looked it over and one of the things that LRC is doing is having the whole agreement reviewed by an attorney to make sure that it's, that it's consistent with what is in the best interest of...
Did you see this, this adendum?
Yeah, I sent it on.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But just, just as a recap, the, we talked about the, the cost being slightly less than the co-op's current kilowatt hour charge. And after that, actually, on Monday afternoon, I received an email from LRPC that said that... after that, actually on Monday afternoon, I received an email from LRPC that said that they just learned that the co-op's kilowatt hour rate is going from 7.3 cents to 9.1 cents effective November 1st. So that gives us a greater savings piece in there because the power purchase agreement is at, where the heck it is, anyways, it's, it's less than what we were paying to the co-op before. And typically in the winter time, the power prices go up, so that should provide us with, yeah, with some additional savings. Now, again, we're gonna lock in at a fixed rate every month through, through the period, and co-op is gonna go up and down, but we're gonna recognize some savings. And in retrospect, we ought to be able to look back and say, here's how much we saved.
And Lake Region would probably come up to that number.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. They'll help us.
Did we already vote on this, or did we?
We did.
Okay. So it's time for me to sign.
No, you sign it on Wednesday.
Yeah.
This is not the current, this is not the final contract with all the stuff in, and Wednesday is the day that it's gonna, that needs to be signed and transmitted over to them.
You'll call me, right, Karen? Or do you, do you like Wednesday?
I'm gonna meet Monday?
No.
No.
Why? You wanna meet Monday?
No. Jeez, I'm not waiting. He's already...
And do you know if Diane has read, has...
Gotten the health...
Yes.
Gotten back with them and verified the account numbers? I talked with her yesterday about that. They'd sent through an email saying, please verify the account numbers, the, the co-op.
Oh, no idea.
Not, not her budget account numbers.
No idea about her, sorry.
Sorry.
I can run her though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything for us?
I just was wondering. I'm pretty confident that the ambulance contract will be discussed at Budget Committee, and if we could have a copy of the resident's study that was done with that bond recorder and R. And we too can look at it and talk about it.
Wow. You, you can talk about it, but just like we talked about, it's pointless.
I'm sure it'll be a topic of conversation.
Right, but, but there's, unless somebody is suggesting that we, that we break the contract, what we're spending is in accordance with the terms of the contract, so...
And this whole notion of, you know, it's the worst deal ever negotiated, it's just, it really, I mean, traffic gets a little grumpy over this stuff.
It...
Next time out, if you've got a problem, then join up and let's negotiate a better deal. But that's the deal we have.
Right.
Yeah, but it was, even last year, it was suggested that we not go forward with the contract.
Well, that's great, but is the Budget Committee gonna recommend that we not do it?
No, we don't.
So why, why do you want to waste money?
We didn't have any information, so I just was thinking if I had the documentation in front of me.
And I go into our Borough Manager Ward project.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
That's all.
No, it's...
You asked if I had a question, so...
Yeah, yeah, so...
You're back?
Yeah.
Yeah, how are you?
Hi there.
Yeah.
Thanks for your coffee.
Welcome to our, welcome to our meeting. How are you doing?
Good.
You have the floor.
Oh, I do.
Before, before we do that, were you able to get back with LRPC on those?
I did this morning, and I had him send me the number so I can verify.
Right.
And there's one that we don't have this account number, so I don't know if it's a typo or what, but I've called them back and left a message.
I'll get with you after the meeting and we'll go.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So. Okay, back to the insurance. We've got the new rates, and I was pleasantly surprised they went down.
Our current?
The Health Trust options went down.
That's, that's the company that we don't currently have.
Correct. Yes, that's to the right with this printed.
And the...
Option one and two.
Right.
Yeah, I know, they went down, and I was like, wow, I had to call and make sure. Are you sure?
So in a nutshell, because I had to run through, and there's option one. Is option one essentially what we currently have with Harvard?
No, not really. And that's on the back of your packet, the last, this right here. I revised it, so you could see the, the original rates and the 2017 rates and 2018. Is it the same? Well, not necessarily. I mean, there are some higher deductibles depending on the service, specialist visits is $40 instead of 15. The current plan is on top of this one.
Okay.
It's not an apple to apple plan, so it's, you know, we've got a lot of similarities.
Okay, so we go...
And the chiropractic did stay 12?
Now, the chiropractic for the Anthem products, the first column, the 1540 is 12 visits, but the 2040 is unlimited.
Oh, so within, so within option one, you have an A and D too?
So that's the same. Unless it's, or...
Standardized?
Yes.
Same, I would agree, you know. It'd be easier to shop around. Pay a deductible for that the next week.
Now, when we talked before, you talked about a premium holiday from InterLocal Trust. Is that a rebate, or is that just applies if we go forward with that?
It only applies if we go forward with, we lose it, we lose some.
Right. So it's an incentive that they're offering for us to continue with that?
I would say so, yeah, yeah.
So that's $6,300, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, applied it on the bottom.
Still, still leaves them $80,000 higher than... Chiropractic. Did you see that on there, Diane?
On the current plan?
It's what, 15, I'm sorry.
$15 copay, 12.
Current plan is 12 visits, 50 dollar copay.
It's up to 1240.
Yeah. Maybe it would be $40.
So that's the same. Our prescription currently is...
103050.
103050, right?
Yeah.
And somewhere zero, I think so.
Excuse me, zero, 103050.
Zero, 10, 30, 50. So that went down. So for the price, for the savings, I mean, what I'm seeing, for the savings of $78,000, you've got an increase in the ER copay, an increase in the chiropractic copay, an increase in the maximum, doubling of the out-of-pocket expense, and a reduction in the cost for the prescription drugs.
No, actually more.
What's that?
Isn't that more? Because it says 102045.
103050 is what we have.
There's 40 or zero, 10, 30, 50. There's only three tiers on the Health Trust.
So the zero accounts for what? That's the mail-in?
I'm not sure. I don't really use that.
I might get it at Rite Aid and mail-in, a lot of the other.
I kind of assumed it was, what do they call it, generic?
Yeah, mail-in, generic. I thought that's what they...
That's what I think.
I thought that's how they explained it.
I can go to Rite Aid and get stuff for zero, but...
And get what?
Get things for zero, right, without a mail-in. And the cop specialist is more too.
Right. I couldn't find it on here, but so I didn't know how much more was... So...
One of the things that, that you, I have no way of knowing from this, and again, because they're listed out a little bit differently, is providers. Often what happens when you have different insurance companies is the providers that are in their program can be different. Okay, so I'm going to Dr. Schmuckatelli, okay, and but when we...
Didn't he lose his license?
Oh, he probably should though. And, and, but we changed a different insurance plan, and now he's not in the network anymore, and so I have to find a new, a new... Hey, I happen to like him now, you know, I've been going to him for years, and so I, and...
Always tells me I'm fine.
Yeah, that's right. So we don't have to have three cocktails a night, and that's what works.
Right. We can, you know, we're one.
Right.
We can ask them that question as far as...
With respect to, yeah.
Providers?
Providers that participate in the plans, and it may be that the answer is, it's pretty much the same.
It's Anthem product, I would assume, but they're pretty good, you know?
But, you know, what we're anticipating is, is changing to a different product, okay? That's what we're looking at here. And that's gonna have some impact on everybody that's covered. You know, the inducement is the, the reduction in cost that is gonna change some of the copays and some of the benefits, and, and also might change who I have to go to as, as a provider. So I think we need to have all of the information in front of us as much as we can before we take everybody that's covered in the plan and force them through a keyhole over here into something different. Clearly, what's presented represents a, a significant savings in premium expense. Now, again, it's, it's arrived at through a number of things, one of which is an increase on, on some of the out-of-pockets that are going along with being covered by the plan. So all of these things are, in my mind, part of what has to go into the, into our decision. And, and part of that is how accessible are providers that participate under the Anthem plan. It may be that that isn't, isn't an issue, that under the plan that everybody has today, as opposed to a plan from different, from Anthem, that everybody can pretty much keep the people they're going to, which takes that out of the decision, in my mind. See what I'm saying?
We make a decision.
Right.
Because right now, all we've done so far are financial pieces.
That's right. That's right. That's the...
But you're also looking at the 2,286 dollar savings on our retired folks.
Right, and I know...
Don't the retired, retired people pay all their own?
They pay their own premium.
So it's a wash aisle?
It's not a cost of the town.
Right, so...
They pay 550, is that where 742 is, $7?
What are you looking at now?
I'm looking at the retiree plans.
Yeah.
Higher children current plan.
You want, oh, the current?
I got it right here.
The her, current one, yes, yeah, it's very expensive. As a matter of fact, I have one retiree that has come through several times who complained how expensive it is, and she, she says it's expensive.
It is, I mean, look...
And it is, especially when you're...
747 dollars.
You have Medicare, you don't need this.
Insurance company isn't paying anything, basically. But at any rate, the Health Trust alternative is $557. And why are we charging our older workers for their healthcare and we're not charging our younger workers for their healthcare? So you're saying that my 65-year-old employee is paying out-of-pocket 747 dollars, but my 45-year-old employee isn't paying anything?
It's not my fault.
I'm not saying it's your fault.
Well, what are you saying?
I'm saying how, well, what I'm saying is how do you justify charging the retired?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't know how that's...
I'm okay with justifying it, as long as the rest of the employees have to pay a little something too.
I have the answer.
Go ahead.
When people sign up for the retirement plan, we used to pay it and then collect the money from them. The insurance company now goes directly to them.
Oh, it's the same thing, because...
Are, are these people currently working for us, or are these...
No.
Okay. So we have no one working for us who's over the age of 65?
Um...
That's like with Lloyd and I.
No, I think they might be someone.
But they're not retirees, right?
They're...
No, they're, they qualify for Medicare.
Yes.
And we pay, the town pays the 500 or 700 or whatever it is.
Not for the retirees.
No, for the person currently working.
And they're going, yes.
Who qualifies for Medicare.
Yes.
We're paying the $500 or $700, okay?
Yes.
That's a fair setup.
Yes.
I was, I thought what you were saying was that we have someone currently working for us who's over 65.
Retiree.
Okay.
Retiree.
Yeah.
Former employee that's retired.
They're not working part-time either. They could be retired and not part-time. We don't have that.
Yeah, it's on Walmart. So if it's expensive, they, there are other Medicare supplemental insurance plans out on the market that you could shop around.
That's true, you can. I think there's a lot more available for those.
What do you think? Do we need to ask, get an answer to that question about the provider before we go?
I think it's, yes, I would like to have more information about that so that I think everybody can understand that reducing the premium is, is a good thing.
Is my math accurate?
No.
We go to the second column.
Yeah.
One hypothetical, 2018 Harvard Pilgrim current plan, and it would cost the town 41,996.64 more than what we're paying this year.
Correct.
Okay. That does not include a premium holiday.
But you did that on the next page.
But I did it further down the column.
Second page.
Right here.
Bottom, I guess.
That's where the premium holiday comes in.
Well, the premium holiday, hypothetically, we take the current plan with the holiday, it would be $35,000.
346,000.
Three.
After the holiday.
Okay. So it would be $35,000 anyways, correct?
Yeah.
If you take 41,999 minus 6327, it's about a $3,500 increase.
$35,000.
$35,000 increase, which is less than 1% increase, correct?
No, it's 10%.
It's 11.46, I believe.
How about?
After the holiday?
Yeah, 11.2.
I don't think so.
Something like that, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's close enough.
What that is is a benchmark for me.
And the Anthem would be $270,000. Like 269,022 or a reduction of 70,000 or 20% of the current cost. But with some significant changes.
Yes.
So, I think, when I'm hearing, you want to know the network.
We want to understand the impact on the employee and who they go see.
Yeah.
Yeah, this. Looking at these two different things, we can understand, okay. So today I'm paying, I'm paying nothing for my prescription and I might even pay $10 for my prescription. Today I'm paying $15 of copay and and if we change, it's going to be $15 of copay. Can you see what I'm saying? So we can sort of line these up and project what the dollar impact is on people. But that doesn't say anything at all about if I have to go to, if I have to.
It would be devastating if somebody was going through a cancer therapy and they had to switch doctors.
Yeah.
I went to the emergency room the night before last, three nights ago. I got something in my eye. Sat there for two and a half hours before they saw me. And then they didn't do anything.
Could I?
If you arrive with a chest pain, it doesn't take that long.
Could I shift gears?
Yes, you don't have a chest pain. Oh, and by the way.
Yeah.
Could I shift gears here? We have now reached the time of the year that's very, very critical for these people here. And I want to direct it toward Diane. She's starting to set the tax rate and it's super busy. Can we authorize her on a permission basis to work one or two extra hours a week? I mean, she's setting the tax rate. She just has to be tucked away without a lot of people coming in and bothering her. For example, one of the times is Thursday when the building's closed. What does the board think of that philosophy?
So what do you, how many hours do you work now?
35. It's, you know, you're accelerating the budgets. And so I've been taking all my time repairing budgets for the.
And do we do?
And the budget can be.
Do we comp time or do we pay you?
I don't have.
For additional time?
I don't have any comp time.
I know, but how do we accomplish getting you more hours of work and not having? We have to compensate you somehow.
Well, we have a budget in line for, it's called overtime, but it's really not overtime. It's straight time, separate from my salary and Karen's. There's a pool of money in the ministry of portion of the budget for either of us.
How many hours a week are you thinking you're going to have to put in?
Well, you know, it's just going to be for, until I can get this tax rate set. Once that's done, then, you know, I just need a little extra time for that. Uh, a couple of, two, three hours?
Couple of, two, three hours?
It depends on D R A. If they get back to me, sometimes I have to wait. I have to call them. We've got to, we've got to go over the M S four again. We have to update the revenues. That's what I was trying to do this morning, but I haven't been able to get to it.
What are your thoughts, board members?
I'm okay, just don't go over 40 hours.
No, I, 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 no, I shouldn't take that much. I might just have to do it one time.
What are your thoughts?
I'm looking maybe between two and four hours. And that's going to take me 39, 39 hours. But it will be over the 40. If it does, I'll mention.
Anything else?
Did you skip the coffee break?
I already did that. I treat while I eat.
Anything that board members have? Anything for the board members?
There's more to this, by the way, I'm not done.
There's.
Go ahead.
We also got our dental rates. It's on the second page in the bottom. It went up this year, 1.2, 2.3%. Since I've been here, they haven't been up. The last two, three years, it's been flat. So they went up a little bit this year. I don't think it's going to impact the budget of the insurance.
Maybe we only gave them town really.
Yes.
Delta.
There is no alternative.
I don't think there is.
Anything else for us?
Yeah. You had asked about the health trust funds. This, I would say, is what you would create that trust.
Are there any towns around us that have this?
We do have one or two. I know one, we went to that project finance. I think it's, what's it?
Worth of town.
Okay, I'm sure there's one that.
Yeah. Great, thank you very much. We'll have something on there, I think, at some point.
Sure, be a couple weeks.
Which point, we'll need to know the balance, where it was paid to fund balance, which I know you have at your fingertips.
Right, so when we, before we set the tax rate, are you going to want, or are you going to consider putting more, taking out more from the fund balance than what was decided last year?
When do we have to have the tax rate in by December 1st, is it?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but we want to do it before that.
Jackie wants to do it before then because.
We want to get the tax bills out.
Yeah, cash flow.
And the county is on track this year.
Yeah. They're not going to hold up the tax.
Then let's make a meeting in November where we talk about that.
Yep.
Because we've kind of got the budget figured out. Hold it up.
So.
Well, how soon, how soon do you think you'll have the information ready that we can sit down and go through it?
You're talking about the tax rate, Mr. Rick, okay. Well, Jackie's hard pressed to get it done as soon as possible. And she was hoping to do it before you went away on vacation.
Yeah.
Which is kind of what I was like, thinking I'm going to need to get a couple more hours just to.
So when is your vacation?
I'm leaving next Thursday.
I'm trying to get ahold of D R A to find out if I can do that before you leave.
Do we, do we want to meet Monday in a work session just for this issue or is that too?
Well, you might not be bringing.
Exactly. Right. And you're leaving next Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we in the early kind of two weeks?
A week and a half, yeah.
Yeah, let's two weeks when he comes back.
Okay, that's reasonable.
Okay.
If, if. I'm not averse to, my schedule is pretty much open next week. So, you know, if we want to get together Thursday morning, let's say. If, if.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with, as soon as you have the information available, having a work session, get it set.
As long as we have 24-hour notice, then we'll be.
Yeah, I know Jackie likes to get the tax bills out. It helps us ultimately and when the money comes in.
Correct.
And, so I don't want to be delaying it.
No, and it does take some time to stock and mail and sort out. It takes a few days to do that.
Yeah, yeah, but there were a couple of years there where the county was closed was sort of causing, yeah, causing the town to be really late coming out with the bills. Yeah.
Do we want to tentatively have a date and time so she can have a notice ready to go for Thursday?
You want to go at 9:00 Thursday morning? You know, for discussion.
Mine wasn't raining.
Huh? What's that?
Mine wasn't raining.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 8:30.
8:30.
Only if you got your stuff together.
Yeah, if it doesn't sound like the R A will be available to me, to us, then I will let Karen know. We can cancel that.
And I don't anticipate this being a lot of meetings for you folks?
No, it usually doesn't.
No, I mean, there's a certain amount of discussion that has to take place, but.
Right.
We can probably make it happen.
And I think last year, we had a phone conference with D R A.
About what?
Setting the tax rate.
What was the question?
Oh, you know, overlay, how much you want to put in overlay? Because when they start plugging the numbers, you get the tax rate. You say, hmm, it's a little too high. Let's take a little bit more out of fund reserve and see what happens. Okay, you know, you get a spreadsheet to play with it a little bit.
But we don't have that on Thursday. Not maybe, but that's what we'll need.
It'll be nice.
Yeah. Because we also want to move some other, I think, we'll have to chat about moving some other fund balance. Something.
Absolutely.
Because I don't know that we can continuously hope for.
It's good to look at.
Reduction in our health insurance.
Did I see a hand though?
You did.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for the selection and everybody that's working on the health insurance for our employees, it's such an important benefit. And Bill's statement about providers is critical. Most insurance companies will provide you with a list of their providers, but I noticed you had Harvard Pilgrim on the list. And repeatedly, when I go to doctors, it's, we no longer accept Harvard Pilgrim or whatever. So it's just, that's a real important factor. So great job. Thanks.
Well, it's not over yet.
It's not over yet, but I, you know, as, as we know, it's always something that's really hashed over. And I just want our employees to have the best insurance possible. Thanks.
Is there a check that goes with this?
I'll move to a journal. Is it on the back?
Look at the arrow, look at the arrow. It's down on the back.
Void.
Void. Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Oh, did I?
It's on the back, right, thank you.
All those in favor say.
You do have to.
Thank you for being enough.